So even though I want it to be noted on the screen here, not in a meeting, but as the mayor, I am still going to recognize our citizenry that contributes to our well-being every day. But first, I'd like to start with Mr. Michael John Cavallaro. So, Michael John, Town of New Milford would like to recognize you for your many contributions to the Conservation Commission, 19 years, and to the Town of New Milford as a whole. As a master of many trades, including accomplished historian, conservationist, and writer, you've been an invaluable asset to our town. If you want to know about a specific piece of town property, you could probably tell me a whole story behind its acquisition. Thank you for your continued dedication to our community.
Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Michael John, would you come back?
I have a picture.
Yeah, like a... This is a momentous occasion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, since this isn't a meeting, may I say something?
Of course.
Michael John Cavallaro is one of the first people I met when I came to New Milford over 40 years ago. And I was working at Lynn Demming Park, and he was the gatekeeper at Lynn Demming Park. And I found him to be a fascinating person, and then the next thing I know, he says, "Come up to Hoot Night", because the Marledale Bahar had open mic on Wednesday nights. I said, "This is a fascinating town. This is a very great guy I just met." You were one of the first I met in town, Mike.
Yes, that's correct. I remember Peter.
It was great.
You remember that Hoot?
I remember. It was so long ago, we both had hair.
Yes. And I was much thinner.
God bless you. Thank you all very much.
Thanks very much. Next, Adam. You can come on up here. So again, another fellow community in New Milford person, given their time and their talent. And Adam, Town of New Milford would like to recognize you for your many contributions to the Conservation Commission and other committees. Your commitment to all is invaluable to our town. Your latest contribution, a book entitled "The Brief History Regarding the Upper Mario Cemetery", is another example of your dedication and knowledge to our town's history. Thank you for all you do for our community, Adam. Thank you very much.
This is Pete. Where are you? Pete who? I figured it out, though.
We could rise for the pledge.
Ms. Francis, could you read us the pledge?
We need to reply of the United States of America, after the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
We can have a moment of silence for the passing of First Lady Barbara Bush. Thank you.
Do we have anybody, Walter, that would like to address?
I'm all right. There's a blank address there.
Zero. Okay. Well, just for the record, again, I'd like to thank Mr. Cavallaro and Mr. Adam Holassie-Coom for their dedication and their service to our town and for what they've contributed over their many, many years. And again, now that we're in session, I'd like to personally thank you on behalf of the mayor and the council for all of your hard work and efforts. Approval of our regular minutes?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, mayor's comments. I'll be pretty brief. First, I'd like to say we had our first New Milford Day at the State Capitol last Thursday. I'd like to thank State Representative Bill Buckby for putting that on. It was a really good day to highlight our town. First time we ever did that up in Hartford. Got great responses. So I'd like to thank all those that went up there and contributed their time and their talent and showed off the great town that we have. Second, I'd like to thank our New Milford Police Department. As we all know, we were in the news for a very tragic homicide that happened up in Gayleedsville. And I'd like to commend the men and women that did an excellent and professional job and represented our town, not only to our constituents here in New Milford, but on a national level as well. So I'd like to personally thank them for all their efforts and highlighting their professionalism for not only the town, but for our state and for our country. So I thank you for that. Next, I'd also like to honor Ezra Woods, who this weekend was 100-year anniversary of his enlistment and his passing. He was the first WWII veteran that was killed in New Milford. May his memory be eternal. And I thank the American Legion for, first of all, naming their post after him and also honoring him as they did on Saturday with the 21-gun salute as well. Also, I'd like to thank the New Milford High School students that are in the Spanish class, learning Spanish. And they went down to do service projects in Peru. Wonderful job showing New Milford what we do. We give not only to our community, but communities throughout, not only the country, but throughout the world. So kudos to them for showing what being a true community person is all about, and I thank them for that. Next, for those that like baseball or softball, good news, besides being Mets fan myself, good news for the town is on Sunday at 10 o'clock, the New Milford Youth Baseball and Softballs have an opening day down at Garrick Farms. So if you'd like to see some kids really play some good baseball, play it for the passion and the love they'd love to see down there, 10:00 a.m., to welcome them to opening season. Also, kind of kudos to our land use team. We're on the shortlist for a bar grant of about $200,000, which can help with riverfront revitalization. The shortlist, we are going up on 5/3/2018 to Hartford at 8:00 a.m. to make our pitch. So it's a shortlist. We've made it so far, so that's kind of some good news. Next, our bond package was sold. So our interest rate is 1.62% on a nine-month band. So now we're going to be able to start our road construction projects. We're looking at continuing and finalizing some of our road work. Some of the road work you're seeing already. We're doing the Rotary, which is being dealt with federal funds. That's starting right now. Also, we're doing some bridge work. And we're going to be doing some mill and paving work a little bit later on. But the good news is, road work's going to be starting. For those that have been to the senior center, you've seen some of the upgrades that are being done. They're almost completed. Beautiful high ceilings. Carolyn is very excited, as are the seniors, for what's going to be a really good event. Also, tonight, you're going to be seeing on our agenda, if the council so approves, Sustainability Connecticut. Brookfield is a town, Roxbury is a town that's been involved in this. It's good for us to be involved in it as well. We'll talk a little bit more about it when we get to it. But it shows our citizenry, the state, investors, business people, that we want to be a sustainable town. We're looking to do as many things as we can, both in energy, both in our economic climate, both in our people, to sustain our community. Also, the Economic Development Commission, to give you an update, has been out talking to our businesses that are already here in town, getting a sense from them as what's working, what's not working. So I'd like to thank Frank Worgo, and I'd like to thank Buck Whiteway and all the commission members for their help in working on this. The Economic Development Commission is up and running, and we do have money for facade improvements and also for microloans. Corporation? Yep, corporation, I'm sorry. So you can go online, see the website, click on the links, and you can learn more about it. And that's pretty much my mayor's comments.
Okay, move forward. Item six. For the celebration of the third Thursday summer concerts, I'd like to move that we have a temporary closure of the Southern Crossover on Main Street. Thursday, June 21st, 2018, rain date, Friday, June 22nd. And Thursday, July 19th, 2018, rain date, Friday, July 20th. From 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. And a temporary closure of Bank Street on Thursday, August 16th, 2018. The rain date there would be Friday, August 17th, 2018. And that'd be from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, tax collector. Discussion and possible action regarding the April 2018 refunds in the amount of $1,953.29, which leaves a balance of $4,930.89. Motion?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion for discussion and possible action, a recommendation on the Job Description Subcommittee. You have it. That's number eight in your packet. On the updated job description of police sergeant.
Thank you. Greg, chief?
Can I have a second, please?
Yep, do we have a second on that?
Sergeant.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Do we have any questions for Greg or for the chief on the sergeant's job description? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine. Item nine, discussion and possible action to consider and approve the revised recycling center fee structure as recommended by the Department of Public Works.
Sergeant.
Mr. Hannah? Can you kind of give a little overview, sir, on the changes proposed to the fee structure?
Okay, thank you. Since being hired last year to manage a recycling center, one of the first goals that I had was to make sure that what happened back in 2010 did not continue to happen. And what happened back in 2010 is a committee had to be formed because the landfill royalty fund was spending more money every year to fund the operations of the recycling center than the revenues. So back then, we sat down with the committee, and that's when the town bought all the equipment down there. And we were able to, we do direct billing now, things like that, which significantly reduced the cost to the recycling center. Fortunately, over the years, the increases have started to creep back up. Our garbage has gone up 9%, our bulky waste has gone up 8%, and our hauling fees have gone up 18%. To the best of my knowledge, there has never been an increase in the cost of the garbage bags that come into the recycle center. The last, the lit, the oldest one that I could find, just detailed, "Don't park and find a ambulance barn", so that's at least eight years. Which obviously, you know, they've moved. But so what we did was, another portion of the recycling center was, we had commercial customers that were required to pay for their recycling. We had no way of weighing them. So it was kind of, well, you know, a couple dollars here, a couple dollars there. We installed a scale, a small pallet scale, which is accurate, certified within one pound, to start paying and recouping some of the commercial vendors that came in. That has increased our revenue slightly. To date, it's like $77. It's not a whole lot. But it is, it was a fee that was never collected. So as we started doing that, we started taking average weights of bags, just random. No rhyme or reason to it. Just we'd get a bag, we'd throw it on the scale, see what it weighed, and we just wrote down the weights. And as we started doing that, we realized that the current fee structure says, if you have a bag up to 16 gallons, it's $1.50. If you have a bag up to 3/2 gallons, it's $3. And a contractor bag is $5. Well, the heaviest 16-gallon bag we got was 42 pounds. Costs us 13 and 1/2 cents a pound to dispose of our garbage. Simply due to math there, we're losing money. These are all averages now. Understand that there's a lot lighter and a lot heavier. The heaviest black bag we got was 76 pounds. You can barely lift it. It takes two guys to lift it. Because for those that have been to the recycle center, you know you have to lift everything just tight in order to get it into our system. So we started looking at, I looked at other towns, and actually, one town I've been studying to northwest is Torrington. They're getting ready to go to a pay-as-you-throw, because they do collection in their taxes. And they found that's not the way to go either. So they're going to do a pay-as-you-throw. They're going to sell their residents' bags. And you put the bag out, and they take it. But each bag is going to handle about 2/3 of what their costs are. I compared that to the increases I'm proposing for tonight. We're almost exactly the same as far as total cost. So we're not, in addition to being able to manage our expenses, we've also reached out and found different vendors for some of the items that we take in and have reduced a lot of the costs. So these are not only increases. We're proposing a tremendous amount of reductions in charges to some items. We're putting the responsibility, right, to the customer. If you want to recycle and you have backyard compost piled, all those things you can do to reduce your own weights. A lot of people can go from what is now a black bag cost down to what will be a poundage cost. Because what we're going to do is we're going to weigh the bags. And people are going to, we're going to pay by pound. If you look at, and I presented you what the cost would be of the disposals. If you look, you can see about what the average weight is on each one of the bags, because right where it balances out to what a $2 bag will cost, that's about the average weight of what the smaller bags have always been. Same thing with the black and same thing with the contractor bags. So the increases we're proposing are, the small bag, which was a 16-gallon bag, is now a bag up to 25 pounds. And that will be $2. From 26 pounds up to 49. 49 pounds will be $4. And from 50 pounds and up will be, 50 pounds is 59 pounds, I believe it was, was...
You have 41 to 59.
41 to 59 is $6. If we get a bag above that, you add the two together. If you have a 70-pound bag, you take the price of a 60-pound bag and the price of a 10-pound bag, and it becomes $7.50 or $8. Fees for residents of Brookfield and Sherman will be 50 cents more per bag than that, which has always been the case. For a small bag, now they pay $1.50, or $2, $3.50, and $5.50. Where we are knocking down a lot of our costs is, anything that we're able to gain additional revenue on from another source, those are the fees that are all going down. For instance, now if you bring in an item that's got Freon in it, it costs $35 to dispose of it, because we have to have a guy come in and certify that it's done. I was able to find a vendor that, he rebates us on any R22 Freon that he takes out. To date, we've gotten almost $1,000 in rebates. So that has significantly reduced our cost of the Freon items. So we're proposing going from $35 to $20 on those. Basically, it's going to handle the cost for him to come out, what he charges per unit to do it, and the handling of it. In addition, we put those appliances and all the Freon items into our metal bin after they're evacuated. Two weeks ago, we had 97 units that we put in there, and we got almost $900 from the metal company for it. So that's another additional we're able to save. So anywhere, we're putting the onus where our higher expenses are. We're going to recoup those. But we're passing on, hopefully, more people start bringing in. You know, where we were charging them $10 to get rid of a washer dryer, it's going down to $2. Almost all the metal items are going down to $2. It's a $2 fee, and that's basically to pay for the machine, because the machine has to handle that equipment and put it into the container. So...
Councilman Francis?
Thanks, Bob. Great work. Having been on recycling committee for a couple of years, I think you're doing a stellar job. And I just, you know, my only concern is we always tried to keep the recycling center as a self-funded operation. We didn't want to try to make a profit on what residents were paying, nor did we want to have residents have to pay for it through their taxes. I think you've done a wonderful job using the opportunity to get rid of the metal to offset. And the poundage on the bags, it's definitely time. And I'm glad you did add the same amount for Sherman and Brookfield residents. So it's pretty much going to stay status quo for the majority of people in their costs, but we're definitely making more, and I really want to commend you for what you've done.
Thank you.
It's excellent. Excellent work.
Mike?
Yeah, first, except the material is priceless. Why is that blank in mine? On the left back.
What? What did you say?
Really free AC water coolers.
You for the proposed one, do you mean?
I had emailed this to the...
I think it just didn't get copied.
Probably just didn't print.
Right.
I can wait a pause.
So basically, what you're saying is by these changes, we will break even or we will get closer to breaking even?
If you take into account all the increases that we've had over the years since at least 2010, like in 2010, we were, we got our bulky price, disposal cost down to $80 by going direct bill. It's back up to $86.50 now. And the place that we take it was just purchased by an equity firm. In the next year or two, that's going up. There's no, there's no talking, there's no doubt about that.
So you're currently breaking even, but you're saying some of the increases might cause you to lose weight?
Right now, we're very, we're actually not breaking even at this point. But these, all these increases will do, minus the loss of revenue for all the other items, will net about $12,000. Okay, as you know, I came in front of council a couple of weeks ago for money for the compactor.
Yeah.
We're hoping to be able to not only maintain them, but be able to, they're getting up there.
Now, you said you charge businesses for recycling. Is recycling the cost of bringing it in compared to the cost, I mean, because we sell some of that stuff, correct?
No, we do not.
No, there's not a market?
No, there's not a market to us. We are charged $10 per ton. We do not charge for recycling.
Yeah.
And we average about 1,200 customers a month that only bring in recycling.
Yeah, wow.
So that's it. And there's another council member.
We're cheap.
But that, there's no charge for other than the annual sticker fee.
So we do have to pay money to get rid of it?
Correct. It costs us 9 cents a pound to process and get rid of, dispose of recycling. So that money, you know, if you take that 9 cents, we have to recoup that. So that money is split kind of equally between the MSW, the garbage, and the bulky waste.
And as far as personnel, you're finding your thing, and your staff is okay? Could you get rid of an employee and save money, or is it pretty much what it needs to be?
I think I, we average about 1,200 customers a week, and 40% of that is on Saturday. We average about a customer a minute on Saturday.
Yeah.
And this is all because of the computer system we put in. I mean, obviously, we couldn't...
So much faster now.
Yeah, it's just so much easier to get people in and out. But it gives us the numbers. And if you've been down there on a Saturday, we used to have a four-hour employee to supplement the two full-timers down there. We're able to keep up with it now. But some of the other things we were able to do is, we used to have the Teamsters take our metal over to New York State to get rid of some of it. By moving stuff more in-house, we've saved, in that alone, we've saved six man-hours. So it's, some of the costs you can't see as a direct dollar, but the man-hours that we've been able to save.
So how many men, how many men do you have there during the week?
There's three full-time, myself and two Teamsters.
And then on the weekend, there's...
Same. But one of...
So the weekend's got 40% of your business. And why do you need to, these are other things we're doing during the week if it's not as busy?
Correct. We also have to maintain the property. And, you know, we, you've been in there, and I think we do a pretty good job of keeping the place.
I'm just saying, you have three people on Saturday and three people during the week, when Saturday is 40% of your business.
Correct.
It seems like during the week, I don't know if you could get by with one less or not. I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking you what you're...
You wouldn't be able to cut a full, you wouldn't be able to cut a full 40-hour position. There's just not, there's enough going on. And now that the spring has come, we're actually going to be rebuilding our garbage compactor in the next couple of weeks. The new compactor's going to be installed.
So you basically have, you have jobs that have to get, like Saturday is just keep that place moving. During the week, you have, you know, people either getting recycling and out or working on jobs around the thing.
Correct, yeah. We're maintaining the property. We also have an electronics trailer. We have the clothing bins. So we're maintaining the area. I mean, and that includes the back hills, you know, the weed whacking, the mowing, and all that, and all that kind of stuff.
Oh?
How much longer is there to weed whack or...
I'm sorry?
You just said you had to weed whack or something? How much longer does that take?
It takes about two and a half hours because of the terrain, because of the gully. That, the gully that we have going around, call it gully, swale, going around the backside of the recycle center, which feeds into the Houstonic. We have to maintain that pretty regularly to...
Because if you have 40% of 1,200 customers during a Saturday, that's 480. So that's 720 customers over...
1,200 recycling customers a month is what I said.
Oh, so how many customers are there in a week?
I'll have to get to that number, Paul.
Yeah, could you, could you get this on a daily basis so we can see how it's broken down on average?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it runs anywhere from like 150 to 240, 250. That's about an average for during the week.
That's during the whole week or...
I'm sorry?
Per day or...
Per day, yeah, except for Saturday.
So if you had 150 customers, it's only like 20 an hour or something between three guys?
It's about one every two minutes, right? Basically half of what we were doing.
All right. Now, do we have any anticipated totals of revenue compared to expenditures that we can see for those? You know, I know back when you guys had the recycling committee, that stuff was looked at very closely.
Yeah.
Is that information that was provided to us at that time being updated or...
That would be, Bob, I only can tell you that what I said earlier, oh, review and comment, that based upon the things they're reducing the cost on and the fact that the weight of the bags, by using weight, I think, and the things that they've economized in with the, using different haulers, taking care of the metal, I think they're more efficient now than before, because we didn't have all of that machinery.
So with this updated fee schedule, then, does this cover our employees' costs, their associated benefits, and the capital costs or...
I don't see, I mean, I'd have to sit down and go through it all, and Bob's been doing it. He's the one to answer you that.
Could you provide us that backup after?
Yeah. One question, Bob.
Could you provide us that backup?
Do you still let, you have to lose a man if they're needed for TPW work, right?
Correct. Anytime that there's an emergency or like an all-call emergency for the public works guys, the two union workers, I actually become a highway foreman at that point. That's 25% of my job description. And my two guys, they both have plow routes. So anytime there's a storm or whatever that we are, that we do close, they're out also. Nights, weekends, all that. But that, those fees are charged. At that point, they're charged to where they work.
Right, I remember that, that they're not charged to recycling. I just have to say, I did go through this, Paul, because I wanted to see everything changed since I kind of felt... since I kind of felt ownership of this for so long, and it makes a lot of sense, and I think it, it's a good balance for the community as well, I mean, we want to make sure that we're not...
So you've seen how, because Bob wasn't here as an employee, obviously, those costs on you guys...
They were different people, but, you know, the function, function was the same, but I think it's, it's more efficient and cleaner now, I think things are maintained very well, not that they were bad before, but there's an awful lot of maintenance, it's, if you spend a couple of days down there, you see how everything gets really, it's equipment that's meant to be used that way, but it does take a beating.
Yeah, I'd just like to see the total breakdown, I mean, I'd like to know if Bob voted tonight, but afterwards, and next.
There's an average of our question count?
No, we didn't get it.
And these are, these are, I took all the paperwork from July 1st, these are what we've actually taken in on these items, and this is what is proposed for the entire year. As you can see, it's a, so far, it's a negative of 17,000, we estimate it'll be a negative of 22,000, with the increases that we're proposing, they run about 34,000, so that's where the 12,000 balance comes in.
As you can see, we're, we're running anywhere from 900 to 1,000 customers a week, and now, understand a lot of that is, we're getting ready to go into the heavy season again, and in the summertime, you know, our, our revenues are significantly higher than...
Any other questions? Mark Kamal?
Actually, I want to follow, I want to clarify a question while Paul was asking about. If you take the total income from the recycling center, that covers all our maintenance costs down there, all our contracts we have, does it cover personnel?
Yes, it does.
And their, and the benefits that go with that?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Any other discussion?
As you, the, the profit and loss statement from last year, which is made public on, is, all that information is in your, it's an annual report, yeah.
We'll, we'll get that, the profit and loss and everything, Councilman Simeaskey and Councilman Nellmas. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Strand.
Uh, item 10, motion to call an annual town meeting for 7:00 PM on May 3rd, 2018, in the Paul Martin Room of the New Milford Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford, Connecticut, for the purpose of discussing the budget as proposed by the Board of Finance in accordance with Section 502 of the Town Charter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Uh, I can read the whole resolution.
Motion to read the resolution.
Actually, I thought it was a long budget referendum?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we just have the one to sign, so if Katie could sign and send it, send it around.
Do you need to move?
And then I have to go to item B2.
Yep.
Motion to establish the town budget referendum for May the 15th, 2018, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, as set forth in the revol, resolution, revolution, and in accordance with Section 502 of the Town Charter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item 11, motion to approve the resolution supporting the town of New Milford's participation in a sustainable Connecticut municipal certification program by establishing a sustainability team within 90 days of April 23rd, 2018. The sustainability team shall meet as frequently as needed but no less than quarterly, and shall report annually to the town council on the progress of its activities towards sustainable Connecticut certification, with reports and presentations made publicly available.
Second.
Any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so we have now...
This one up here?
Yeah, we gotta go to the next.
Discussion.
Item B, motion to accept, acceptance of Connecticut House Bill 6126, Special Act 11-10, an act authorizing bicyclists to cross the Housatonic Railroad at grade in New Milford.
Second.
So...
Were they not allowed to cross prior to this?
Uh...
That's how you ask this.
2011?
They...
Was there somebody stopping there?
No. We were notified that we needed to, in town council, there never was an appropriation after 2011 to approve the use of this pedestrian and bike walk. So for their paperwork, they wanted us to, as a council, approve it.
This is by Sega?
Yep.
But this covers, does this, and I asked this question too, that, does this cover, because it's not specified, is this just by Boardman Bridge, or is this every crossing in down in Milford?
Says right here. Sega Meadows.
Okay, so will we need to do this for other crossings? You can walk and bicycle and crawl and...
There's already, there's already, to think the difference between the other crossings is there's road traffic, this is the only crossing that has a path that goes across it, so that might be the reason why they don't have to do the other ones.
Bridge Street's a pretty wide path, and you can go right across there. I, I mean, I don't see the differentiation, so that's why...
A car can go across that, correct, in Bridge Street?
Car can go across some...
This is a trail.
This was a new crossing when Sega Meadows was created back in 2011, which required...
You've been able to cross the railroad tracks at Boardman Bridge since before cars?
Correct, this is adjacent to Boardman Bridge, so this was a new crossing that previously didn't exist before 2011.
Okay, so, but it doesn't specify, that's the only thing I'm saying, is it, it doesn't say anything about it being a bicycle, it says in this, from the bill, it says via bicycle path, so we don't...
Yeah, you gotta look at the public act online and it explains.
It's right here, it says, it says bicycle path, but we don't, so as long as everybody's fine with that, Attorney Grimes? Okay, then.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to transfer funds $75,000 from contingency to other legal expense specifically due to anticipated expenses for ongoing litigation. These funds are anticipated for expert witnesses, depositions, trial management, conference, and preparation thereof.
Second.
The contingency account is, let me read that in, 1,000 slash 1,098000, object 53108, moving to other legal expense, 1,000 slash 104, 13900, object 53101.
Still second.
Any discussion?
Can we just have a matter correction? I mean, when I first read this, and the word TO was in capital, I thought it meant something else instead of just the word two.
Sure.
I thought it was referring to some special fund or something.
So make that just a small T in it.
It's on the, on the form.
Right.
Makes sense, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, move for the following appointments and reappointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion to approve them en masse.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Do you want to read them? Wait, you don't want to read them at all?
Nope.
Okay, then. I thought so, I just, as long as you're happy to read them.
Would you disagree with any of the names?
Nope.
I, I'll land two, there's no one I didn't want to see get approved, so I'll choose.
You got a second?
We have a second for Mr....
You got a second on adjourned?
All those in favor?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.